You.
Going to call to order the council meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge ran over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. A form is present for the City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority, Finance Authority, Parking Authority, and Joint Powers Authority.
Okay, with that, we'll engage in public comment. First, we're listening to the City Council's Successor Agency Housing Authority, Finance Authority, Parking Authority, or the JPA on any item. On the agendas may do so at this time. Hearing no public comment. Item one, CSA one and H one.
Want register.
Receiving file. M one.
Approval of the minutes for the meeting held on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, and March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Gray, Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. We're going to go on to the consent calendar. And I'm going to pull item four. Is there motion to approve items two, three, and five through eight?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Gray.
Hold on one second. Made a mistake. We're pulling item five instead of four.
Item five.
So, so we're pulling five. So we're going to go items two, three, four, and six through eight.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, it's actually item four. You're correct on the first one.
So we're going to redo it. What we're pulling for, all we have to do now is approve five and pull four. All right, so is there motion to approve item five?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. And so, item four, very quickly discusses the general plan. Ordinarily, when we approve a general plan because it's so complex, so Byzantine, there's never a discussion about it. So what we've done is put together a video for the public to give more insight into something that's done every few decades and costs a lot of money. The last time Inglewood General Plan was comprehensively updated was in nineteen eighty-seven, about four decades ago. Today, we embark on a path that lays the foundation for a stronger, more resilient, and inclusive Inglewood over the next twenty-five years. Typically, the general plan is not seen as critical to the progression of a city. It's not mirrored to the aspirations of the city. As the mayor, the vision that I've set in conjunction with the council is amplified by our shared vision. A vision that reflects a dedication, collaboration, and collective vision of the entire Inglewood community. The guiding principles for this plan were shaped by over twelve hundred comments and contributions from residents, business owners, stakeholders, and community members from across all four council districts. The following video is a visual representation of our shared vision for the city of Inglewood for the next twenty-five years, an Inglewood that is thriving, inclusive, and built for the future. Could you run the video?
The city of Inglewood, with our rich history and diverse culture, owes our returns and success to our residents, small businesses, and economic partners. Community pride in the city's resurgent national brand as a premier place to live, work, prosper, and play is both tangible and visible. Inglewood's vibrant residential neighborhoods and our diverse range of local services, accented by our state-of-the-art sports and entertainment venues, attract regional and international visitors throughout the year. Inglewood is an inclusive community where people walk, run, recreate, and actively participate in community events, both large and small. Inglewood is a city that cherishes the concept of being good neighbors. Inglewood's next level will be defined by our ability to provide residents and visitors with a variety of housing choices, both market rate and affordable, alongside desirable shopping and services. The Inglewood resurrection will continue to manifest itself in the abundant generation of well-paying jobs for residents and surrounding cities, along with improved access to healthcare. The next level of Inglewood is not just a vision. It's a continued manifestation resulting from the combination of intricate strategy, planning, and implementation processes, both broad and intricate. These have resulted in the current Inglewood reality. This reality has birthed a thriving local economy where big and small businesses, for the most part, blend seamlessly to serve both local residents and visitors from all over the world. Inglewood's next level will be defined by our commitment to develop practices grounded in environmental sustainability, small business economic incubation, and the promotion of high levels of public safety, all along with a continued recognition of the need to promote social equity. We will leave no residents behind as we embrace our self-imposed mandate of social and economic self-determination. The city of Inglewood will continue to be a municipal leader, setting the example for other cities to follow.
And there we are. So we'll go on to D, to DR one.
Staff report recommending the mayor and council members approve and authorize the execution of a lease and development agreement with Wild Media Incorporated.
Move one and two.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Yes, I do have a couple of questions regarding DR one. Please. Yes, I know we didn't have a staff report on this, but I did want to ask a few questions, make a few comments. This does have to do with, I believe, my, it has to do with kiosks being placed in the community. And I know there, I think what I read was two would be placed in District One, so, and, and four, but two in the first phase. But my comment really has to do with, I think it's important because it will provide a revenue stream for our communities, for, for the city.
Absolutely.
And, and that's the positive part about it. And I think it would allow small businesses to perhaps advertise to. And that may be a question, but I think it's, it's a very positive thing to support. And I do plan on, on considering supporting it. But I wanted to, my district certainly to realize that these kiosks will be in District One. I think there are four, two in the first phase. And they will provide, and I think, a needed revenue stream for the city, the city budget, because, you know, it's important that the streets are kept clean and, and paved and so forth, and the trees are trimmed. So I think my looking at this is that it is needed because of those important services that it will support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Could you call the roll?
Council members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. SPH one.
Staff report requesting a public hearing be set to consider the priority, community, development, and housing needs of very low, low, and moderate-income residents for the development of the two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-six annual action plan.
Okay, so we're going to set the public hearing, one, for May sixth at two P M. That's a good phone. When it's set, another public hearing for July fifteenth at two P M. And the final public hearing for December ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, at two P M. A one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council. The record should reflect that the City Council recessed in the closed session, all members being present, with the exception of Councilwoman Falk, to discuss the three items posted on today's closed session agenda. With respect to item CS one, the City Council voted four to zero to accept the settlement claim proposal of William Charles bearing claim number twenty-four, one, seven, six, nine, seven, one. With respect to item CS two, the City Council voted four to oh to accept the settlement claim proposal of Antonio McDonough bearing claim number twenty-two, one, six, one, one, eight, two. And finally, with respect to item CS three, the City Council received a report from the city's designated negotiators. Feedback was provided by the City Council, but no final action was taken. Thank you.
Thank you. A two.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
CM one.
No, no oral report, sir.
CC one.
The City Clerk wanted to wish the City Treasurer a happy belated birthday. Her birthday was March twenty-sixth. And she also wanted to tell Teresa, Thomas, and Daniel that they did a fantastic job at the STEM Fest on Saturday. That is all.
Okay, CSA two.
Approval of the minutes for the meeting held on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, and March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second. Madam City Clerk.
Successor Agency members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. Adjourned to Successor Agency Housing Authorities in session, H two.
Approval of the minutes for the meeting held on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, and March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing Authority members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. Adjourned to Housing Authority, uh, the Finance Authority's in session. F one.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Finance Authority members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. The Housing, the, um, Finance Authority's adjourned. Parking Authority's in session, P one.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Parking Authority members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. That adjourns the Parking Authority. The JPA's in session, JPA one.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, and March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Joint Powers Authority member Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. Adjourned to JPA. There are no appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Public comment. Any person wishing to address the council on any matter connected with city business not elsewhere considered on the agenda may do it, do so at this time. Yes, sir.
Mayor, City Council, residents of Inglewood. I just wanted to let people know, we don't often, every show let, is it working? Mic working? Check one, two? We don't publicize all the shows we do. But this Sunday for Easter, we are having a gospel show. And I did want to let people know, it's Corey Henry. He just won the Grammy for the Best Roots Album. Amazing musician. It's this Sunday in the evening. We've allotted some tickets also to, for Fire Relief. There's some families receiving some proceeds through the Miracle Theater Foundation. So for folks who are looking for, to celebrate Easter and somewhere to go, great music, on Market Street, you'll probably see Councilman Padilla there because he comes to lots of our shows. But there's some flyers outside, but just want to let you know, blessed Easter to everybody.
Thanks, Owen.
Hi, my name is Aubrey, and I'm here with the Inglewood Farmers Market. If you don't know that Inglewood has a farmers market, we do. It takes place every Saturday from nine to one at Hollywood Park. And we will have a really vibrant bunch of farmers and artisans and food vendors, many of whom are Inglewood natives. We really want everybody in Inglewood to know about our market. We've brought flyers. They're cute. You can stick them on your fridge. And I'm going to let you hear from our market manager.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Trinity Oliver, and I am the manager of the Inglewood Farmers Market. So I just wanted to talk about a few of our programs. So one of my favorite programs is that the market accepts CalFresh benefits and Market Match. So Market Match is our program that means EBT users can receive dollar-for-dollar matching up to fifteen dollars. It's more money for fresh fruits and vegetables at no extra cost. We'd love for the city of Inglewood and community-based organizations to use our space for meetups and events. We already have done events like yoga classes, coffee with the Councilwoman Falk, and soon, Inglewood Master Gardeners, and a cooking class with the Inglewood Public Library. So if you're looking for a space to host public events, or a community event, or a public class, the Inglewood Farmers Market has the space and a growing audience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Greetings to the leadership of Inglewood, to the mayor, City Council, people present. I am so thankful for all the things that are happening in Inglewood, but I also must be conscious that we are surrounded by the city of Los Angeles. And what happens there happens to us. So I'm hopeful that me repeating what the city attorney, Rob Bonta, and the person that's running the schools, I'm forgetting the name now, but their policy is very detrimental to a lot of children. And I hope that it comes to light. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. With that, we will close public comment. Go to council comments. Councilwoman Gray, District one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon. First, let me wish our City Treasurer a happy belated birthday also. Owen Smith and Mariana Smith, his wife, runs a wonderful business called the Miracle Theater. It's a wonderful business in our city, a place to go to because they have wonderful music. And thank you for being in District one, very supportive of that business. Also, I want to congratulate, I don't know if I did this, we've been dark for a couple of weeks, so I'm not sure if I congratulated our senior city manager, Jose Cortez, right? And also Chris Jackson, who was promoted to Assistant City Manager. And also Yukima Decater, who was promoted to Assistant General Manager. And the mayor probably going to speak on this, but I understand that Yukima is our first woman city manager, and certainly the first African-American woman. So we really have to congratulate that. Congratulations, but, you know, it's, it's such a wonderful leadership team and headed by Louis Atwell, and I'm so happy that all these promotions did happen. So thank you very, very much, Louis, for doing that. Let's see. At my last commissioners' meeting, because I have meetings with my commissioners probably every couple of weeks, I had invited Cal Patterson, who heads up the Western State's Carpenters, to do a presentation. And they were during, they were there to talk about two programs called Brothers Keepers. You can see a picture, and South L.A. Boots. And they're, they're a four-week carpenter training program designed to introduce many different trade crafts. And like Boots is designed specifically for women. So they're like pre-apprenticeship programs for the trade. So there's a flyer on the screen. They're doing amazing work in the community. So thank you, Cal, for being there. Also, I spoke at the, at a community tour of the Warren Lane Old Daniel Freeman School. Dr. Morris had a community meeting basically to invite the parents from, from council school because they will be transferred to Daniel Freeman School. And there I am speaking, but you will see, there's a couple of pictures, I believe, unless they've shown it, that shows how that school has been renovated. It's absolutely beautiful. You know, they did a complete renovation, I believe, and that's just the classroom. And so it was a wonderful meeting. The parents were there. And so thank you, Dr. Morris, for inviting me. Also, I had the honor of presenting a commendation to Linda Credit, who owns the Rusty Pot Cafe. Let's see if the picture will, there she is. She's a businesswoman. She's been there for eleven years. And so congratulations to Linda Credit. It's wonderful to see our small businesses continuing to exist, and it's wonderful to see a woman that's in charge. And she's, she's been there for, for eleven years. So congratulations to Linda. Also.
Minute.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. I appreciate. Just a couple of more. Last week, metropolitan, two weeks ago, I believe, Metropolitan sponsored a water inspection trip, and it's a trip designed to invite the public to learn about where our water comes from. Colorado River is the one that I went on with one of our folks who work here. There's Bernard McCrumby in that picture, and there's a picture of the river. So it is a inspection trip free of charge to the community. And so if you're interested, let me know. Also, I attended the Lions Annual Pancake Breakfast along with my councilperson, Alex Padilla, and also the mayor, Mayor Butts. He was there. It was a great, great pancake event. You can, that's a picture of the three of us, as well as Yolanda. And so they do great work in the communities. I was very happy to be there along with my colleagues. The last item I want to mention is the STEM Fest. I think someone mentioned it before. It was an absolutely fabulous event. There's a picture of this me speaking, but there's another picture of the mayor and everybody there. All the councilpersons were there. It's just a wonderful event. Kudos to Teresa Estrado and Thomas Yu. They did a fabulous event. So thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Padilla, District two.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to congratulate, you know, Chris Jackson and Kima on their promotion as Assistant City Managers. You know, our, our staff is important because they're the ones where the rubber meets the road. They're the ones that help kind of structure what we're doing here within the city at the direction of the mayor and the council and the folks up here on the dais. But they're the ones that really make it happen. And so I want to congratulate them, as well as, you know, Jose Cortez on his promotion as well. So we are, you know, we, we, some exciting times here in the city of Inglewood. And to that, I want to thank Stormburgers. They reached out to us and said, hey, we want to show our appreciation to our Inglewood employees. So they're going to be sponsoring a lunch to all our city employees in the next couple of weeks, courtesy of Stormburgers. So Sylvia will be putting out the update in May.
We have one, too.
You know, and we can have two of them. But, you know, the mayor and I had an opportunity on Sunday afternoon to go down to Truvine Baptist Church to present Pastor Austin Williams with a plaque and a street sign and a couple of items there. He's been the pastor there for fifty-two years. And like the mayor said, forever. And so he is going to retire. But I told him, I said, there he is getting his sign. I said, look, this is my third time going to one of your retirement events. Is this, I said, is this the real one or not? And so to make sure it's, you know, we made, we forgot the S on the Williams, right? You see that? I said, we'll give that to you on your next retirement, you know? So it all worked out great. So the mayor and I had a fun-filled afternoon. We also, you know, went out, the mayor, Gloria, and myself, and we went to the City of Champions Lions Club Pancake Breakfast. And I got to tell you, we had a fun time. Yolanda Lantern is the president of the Lions Club here in Inglewood. And then I want to thank IHOP, right here on Century Boulevard. They donated all the pancakes. They actually cooked the pancakes. They, they let me go. I used to be the one flipping the pancakes, but IHOP came in and I can't compete. So they, so they were there, the gentleman right there, he at least let me do a photo op, right? I said, come on, man. So, yeah, and I burned the ones I cooked. You're right, Louis. I heard you. You know, but, but we had, we had a great time. And then straight from there, we all headed, you know, code three over to Vincent Park, to the STEM, Sports STEM Fest. And to see all the kids out there and to see all the community members having fun and understanding that it's more than just sports, right? When you bring in the STEM aspect of it, it really makes a huge difference for our children, for their development. It's not just about being able to kick a ball or hit the, you know, baseball or, or make a shot. It's also about thinking about how you bring that into mathematics, into science. You know, and so I want to thank this Parks and Rec folks, Thomas Yuall, and all your people for putting that together, and the community for coming out. With that, I want to wish each and every one of you a blessed and happy Easter, and hopefully we'll see you Sunday at the Miracle Theater. Thank you.
Councilwoman Falk in District four.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to congratulate everyone. So we have Chris Jackson, Yukima Decater, Louis Atwell, Jose Cortez. So there has been some movement, as you can tell, at City Hall. But we are so happy and proud of our staff because they are qualified, knowledgeable, and ready to be promoted. So congratulations to absolutely everyone. You guys are all going to be amazing in your new roles here at City Hall. Okay, so next up, I have the District four Town Hall that's happening tomorrow. And it will be at Hollywood Park Casino, where it is every time. It starts at six P M., and I have some really great updates. So I'm encouraging District four residents to make sure that they are there and attend. I want to share with you, there'll be some refreshments, too, so a little bit of an incentive. So Town Hall tomorrow at six P M. And then also, I wanted to acknowledge as well our Parks and Rec's director, Thomas Yuall, Teresa Estrada, the whole Parks and Rec's team. They put on that wonderful STEM Fest. I won't say too much more because everybody kind of acknowledged it here, but it was amazing. And we are always happy to be out there and support them. I think it was their fourth annual event. So congratulations again to that team for another successful event. I want to lift up Henry Brown, our District four Commissioner. He spoke and had delivered a sermon at Morningside Church on Crenshaw Boulevard. There he is. He's always sharp. And so I was happy to go out and support him, me and some other commissioners. There's Cheryl and his wife, and then also Pat. So we were all out there to support him as he delivered his sermon on Sunday. Also, I attended St. Mary's Academy. They have a, a career pathway discovery for the young ladies right here in Inglewood. And I'm always happy to go out and support them. I've been doing it for years, and that was the panel. And the, the officer on the right is one of the highest-ranking officers in L.A. County. She is the LAX, and she told me to tell you hi, Mayor Butts.
Oh, is that right?
She says she knows you.
I voted her while I was there, not to.
Okay. See, not paying attention. Okay, let me finish up. Okay, really quick, really quick. Women Rock, Women Rock is coming up Saturday, May third. It's happening. It's going to be amazing. So please, 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 make sure you're on the lookout. We have a QR code where you can register for the event. We have some great speakers in the house. We have another one that's on, that's not even on the flyer. And when you guys see that, you're going to be amazed. So anyway, make sure you register for Women Rock. I want to close in honor of two gentlemen. Mr. Elroy Gilliam, a fifty-year resident. He's a father of resident Karen Carter. I think she's in the audience. Is she, there she is. We're so sorry for the loss of your father.
Hey, Williams.
Mr. Elroy Gilliam. And he was also, he worked at the Inglewood Courthouse. Okay, so we are very sorry for your loss, ma'am. Lastly, we have Mr. Cedric Price. He is a family friend. My husband has known him for many years, and he is a pillar in the community. He owns, a small business owner. He owns several Jack-in-the-Boxes. And he has always supported different organizations. He's a very big member in the Divine Nine, Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity. My sons loved him. He is going to be missed tremendously. And so, closing in those, in their honor. Thank you.
Councilman Morales, District three. Just a little bit more of the same. First of all, great event, the STEM event. Thank you, Thomas. Thank you, Teresa.
of all, great event, the STEM event. Thank you, Thomas. Thank you, Teresa. And the good thing about that event is that it ended with all the children who signed up and showed up to the STEM Fest. They get a scholarship to attend our summer program here in the City of Inglewood at our various parks. So that was a big plus that the STEM event brought to the kids. And then I want to also congratulate, you know, Chris Jackson and K- 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 Kima Decatur for their promotions. I have to say, you know, Chris, Chris is someone who's been around for a number of years, has really seen our growth through it in the planning department, not an easy position. Brought out his position with the venues that are there. I mean, he, he literally led the department through all of that. So congratulations, Chris. You know, long overdue. And then I have to say, Kima, Kima started here in the City Clerk's office. I don't know what position, like eight or the bottom, the bottom position. And, you know, she may be the first one I've seen from the bottom all the way to where she is. So that's huge. Single mom, you know, and she finished her degree while working here full-time in order to continue to move up. So, you know, just a great example, not only to every other employee, but to everybody. So congratulations. And then also, of course, I don't want to let Jose go out. I mean, thank you, Jose. You've quietly reached where you've reached, and you, you know, it's because people actually do notice what you do. So thank you. Beyond that, that's it, Mayor. I'm good. Thank you. Happy Easter. Okay. I don't even know what pictures they're going to put up. Don't do the STEM Fest. Is there anything else that I did that's important, Thomas?
You got to wake them up.
Wake them up, Thomas. Oh, okay. So Kevin Hart was in the city, and JP Morgan sponsored a financial literacy course for Inglewood High and Morningside High. And a surprise for them at their graduation was that Kevin Hart was going to be a surprise visitor. And we had a little panel that day, and the kids were thrilled. And that's all I have to say about that. Now, what I want to talk about is first, Jose Cortez. Jose was working in finance when I get here, got here. What were you doing in finance, Jose? He was a senior account clerk, okay? And the guy has advanced over the last thirteen years to the point where he's the number-two person in the city hierarchy. And good person, knowledgeable person, sensible person, just a good role model. And so congratulations, Jose. And then you take Chris. He was working for Linda Tatum when I came here. I don't know exactly what his position was. But when Linda left, he ascended, and he has been the tip of the spear for all these development projects, you know? He's the person that oversaw the permitting and, and a lot of things. And so, so we really appreciate him, and he's, his promotion is well-deserved. But the person I have the most affection for is Yukima Decatur. When I came here, she was, I don't know, she, she had just left the City Clerk's office, and she was like a staff assistant or something on the ninth floor. And she, her office, if you could call it that, was a closet on the ninth floor that had no windows, and it was tricked, it was truly a closet. And it's now our kitchen. We remodeled the two closets and made it a kitchen. And I said, who did you piss off? Did she put you in an office with no windows? And I got to know her. She's very smart. And so she, she knew everything about how things were routed and how things went. And I started calling her the boss lady. And she has been an amazing example of what competence will bring you. And so congratulations, Kima, boss lady. And with that, we'll close in the name of Elroy Gilliam and Cedric Price, and we're adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.